Whipper snap.
They'll do that to you.
You leave that down.
I'll call the order of the regular meeting to Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District for November 22, 2021. If everyone would please rise. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on our board, port, and the people who depend upon it. We ask that you guide us in our decisions tonight, that they are for the good of those we serve. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Guidry, a lead is in pledge.
May we all face the flag, please?
Please leave the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which this stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board encourages public comment and questions regarding all agenda items. Persons wishing to do so should complete a speaker's card, which is at the entrance to the boardroom. When speaking or asking a question on an agenda item, one should, in addition to completing the card, come to the microphone, be recognized, provide your name, address, and phone number. Comments by individuals will be limited to three minutes. The first item is approval of the October 25, 2021, regular minute meetings. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. Darbone moves. Mr. Dixon, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2021-055.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I believe Mr. Prudhomme has an item he'd like to offer. Let's go ahead and do that if we can.
Okay.
Yeah, before we get too far down the road.
All right.
Just so we, if we're going to amend the agenda, we need to go ahead and do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend today's agenda to add the following item: Discussion and appropriate action reporting an agreement to engage outside counsel to represent the board's interest in drafting new employment contracts for the general counsel and executive director.
Okay. Have a motion to amend the agenda, second.
Second.
Mr. Lorenzey, second. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add, it must be unanimous.
Unanimous consent to add the item. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Agenda item is added.
And you can take it, you can take it up at your leisure. I just wanted, if we're going to amend the agenda.
We'll take it up when we do, before we do the report on the committee report.
Sounds good.
Okay. Submission 2021-055. Mr. Self.
Yes, Mr. President. Staff seeks approval to enter to agreements with G2X and other financial institutions required for the issuance of revenue bonds for the project on district property on the Turning Basin. As you'll recall, in 2015, the port entered into an agreement with Big Lake Fuels for about 200 acres for a project that they have near the industrial canal. In 2018, they received an allocation from the State Bond Commission for some bonds. The port is the conduit for those bonds, and we have representation here from both G2X and their bond council, and they'd like to do a presentation for you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, for having us. It's been a couple of years since we've been here last, and we figured we'd like to give a little update on where we are, why we're looking to extend these bonds that the port has so graciously been the conduit for. I'll go relatively quickly, but if you have anything, feel free to stop me. Sorry.
Might have turned it on.
Turned it on. That was the first thing I realized I had to do. It's okay.
And you're representing them as bond counsel?
No, sorry. So, sorry, while he figures that out. My name's Steve Hirsch. I'm the managing director of business development for ProMen. ProMen owns 100% of G2X, which owns 100% of Big Lake Fuels. So, I'm giving a presentation on behalf of the company. We have, I guess, Port's bond counsel is here, if you have questions.
Okay, thank you.
Jones Walker. You can just, there's only like three slides. If you want to just do it, I'll give you the signal. Okay, great. So, just as a brief recap, the project is a natural gas to methanol plant, and that's a critical part of ProMen's long-term growth strategy. And we're the second-largest producer of methanol in the world. In 2018, we ended up deferring our project here in Lake Charles in lieu of a more advanced project in Beaumont, so that project is up and running in Beaumont. And Lake Charles still is an important part for us for our long-term strategy. The project is still what we call shovel-ready in terms of permitting and right-of-ways and so forth. And of course, as Richard Self said, we're looking to extend these bonds and keep the volume cap allocation so we can use that to help fund the project in the future. And one other point, I mean, this is not, while the port has no obligations or costs, this will cost ProMen or Big Lake Fuels somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 to $10 million to do this transaction, thus increasing our commitment to the project and to Lake Charles. What we've done over the last 24 months, probably since the last time I've been here, we have acquired additional 55 acres with the port under the lease. We've made a whole lot of payments on right-of-ways in the neighborhood to keep everything current. On the permit side, we've made some additional amendments and secured the U.S. Corps Amendment for additional land, including wetlands mitigation for our pipeline and utilities right-of-way. We also got approval for our soil management plan. So, we have been busy, and we have been spending some more money in this area on the permitting. In addition, one benefit that we had for postponing the project is on the technology side. We're now, we've done an extensive review of the technology selection and have now selected the most efficient and environmentally friendly technology, which is now part of our new permit. So, that will, when we do build it, it will be the methanol plant with the lowest environmental impact. And then furthermore, we've been working with Entergy over the last few months. In addition to finishing the Class III study, we've also been working with them to coordinate permitting and right-of-way transfer such that they can complete their transmission line across the property. So, a lot of work has been going on in the last 24 months. Most people haven't seen it, but there has been work done. And then, you know, a lot of different factors go into the timing of the project. Of course, the funding is one key component, which of course, the bonds will help us long-term for the funding. But also, long-term methanol demand and supply balance is important. You know, over the last couple of year, three years, the U.S. Gulf Coast has seen an increase of capacity of methanol plants, including one of our own in Beaumont, but as well as one on the Mississippi River. So, you know, now the U.S. is a net exporting country of methanol, when in the past it was an importer, which is fine because we have such a wonderful deep-water port here. So, we would be very happy to export even from Lake Charles. Methanol prices have been rebounded. In 2019, 2020, it hit, you know, significant lows, much like many commodities around the globe, but prices have rebounded and hope to stay strong into the future. One of the things that ProMen is working on is actually creating our own demand, our own new demand that's not accounted for, specifically in the shipping industry. You know, methanol is a really strong candidate for a clean fuel, both fuel generated from natural gas or beyond. We've invested in six methanol-fueled ships to go with our fleet of 13 ships that we have floating in the world right now, which will start receiving in 2022 and 2023. The picture on the right is our first ship that was floated just a couple of weeks ago. So, we're proud to see that, at least it, you know, floated and it went well. So, we hope to receive that in the early 2022, and then five more over the next couple of years. And that's going to help also improve the demand for methanol as a clean fuel for both, you know, long shipping, excuse me, seaborne shipping, as well as ferries and tugboats. We think that that's actually a pretty important part of the future growth. And so, those are things we've been working on to help improve demand and help, you know, expand into Lake Charles and build up capacity for that new demand. And again, my last point, we've been working with the port for several years now. It's a shame that the only time I come here is talking to you guys of why we're delayed. We'd love to be here next time, you know, cutting the ribbon, but we definitely are still committed to the Lake Charles area and the state of Louisiana, and hope these bonds go a long way to get us to the finish line. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Need a motion and a second to put it on the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Dixon moves.
The submission 2021-055.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Prudhomme. Discussion. The, you're with the attorney, bonding attorney?
Yes, that's correct. John Morris, Jones Walker, bond counsel for the port.
On the bonds, when have you all gone, when will you go to the commission, or have you gone to the bond commission?
We went to the bond commission last week, and it received unanimous approval without discussion, so.
And as I appreciate it, although these bonds are being issued, they're going to be escrowed, and there's, the port's basically a conduit for this issuance of the bonds, and there's no liability for the port.
That's correct. There's no liability for the port.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I hear? No other questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Submission 2021-056. Mr. Self.
Yes, Mr. President. Approval is sought to enter to an agreement, a purchase agreement, with the Dunahou family to purchase their parcel along Salier Street to facilitate the Salier Lee rail relocation. As you'll recall, the port signed an agreement with DOTD and is obligated to expend up to $1 million on the rail relocation for Salier. And again, as you'll recall, this is all related to the bridge project. The rail is required that the rail be moved so that it doesn't block traffic. And so, as we move it on the other side of Salier Street, we're obligated to spend up to a million. This piece is estimated at a cost of $177,219. Previously, you may recall that we purchased the Groff property, so that the Groff property in this is going toward that million-dollar cap.
I'll make a motion to approve item 2021-056.
Okay. Mr. McCleary moves. Mr. Guidry, second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2021-057. Mr. Self.
Yes, Mr. President. Staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize an agreement for owners' representative and inspection services with River West for various port construction projects during fiscal year 2022. We previously, River West has done QAQC work for us in the past, actually, the past 16 years. They work with Nick on a lot of the capital projects. As you may recall, we previously had two engineers. Nick is our sole engineer for the port now. So, having River West work closely with Nick on these projects is, projects is going to be very important. And as you recall, we have a lot of repair projects from Hurricane Laura, Delta, and the freeze. It's estimated a cost of $225,000 for 2022.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve submission 2021-057. Mr. Darbone moves. Mr. Lorenzey, second. Any discussion, questions?
Is Apshar still working with that company?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. He's still working with them.
Okay. That's it.
So, Nick, this is allowing up to 225. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a hard number?
No, ma'am. It's all, it's all based on rates.
It's all based on?
They're coded to each project that they actually work on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2021-058. Mr. Self.
Yes, sir. Staff requests the Board of Commissioners to authorize the executive director to enter into a professional services agreement with Meyer &amp; Associates Incorporated for the design and preparation of bid documents for reconstruction of Shed 7 at City Docks. Previously, a few months ago, you authorized us to enter into an agreement to have Shed 7 demolished. Again, that's a train shed that was badly damaged from Hurricane Laura. It's going to be demolished, and then we're going to, Meyer &amp; Associates, with your approval, will engineer a new building for us to improve our coverage storage at City Docks. And we're recommending the acceptance of the qualifications of Meyer. They did do an SOQ. They received three responses. Staff's recommending Meyer at a cost of $600,000 plus a $100,000 contingency, for a total of $700,000.
I'll make a motion that we approve submission 2021-058.
I'll second it.
Mr. Dixon moves. Mr. Guidry, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2021-059. This is a resolution that we added to the agenda for Mr. Prudhomme to enter to an agreement for outside counsel. Mr. Chairman, again, I move that the Commissioners of the Port Board enter into an agreement with outside counsel on terms acceptable in the discretion of the Board for representing the Board in drafting new employment agreement contracts for both the executive director and general counsel. Mr. Prudhomme moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lorenzey, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Next item is the Administration Personnel and Audit Committee report. Mr. Lorenzey.
The Administration Committee met, excuse me, earlier today, and the met an executive session, I guess, is the correct way to say it. And then afterwards, there was a vote taken, and the committee voted to make a finding and to make a report that both Mr. Self and Mr. Ringo exceeded expectations in their evaluations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the recommendations of the committee, Administration, Finance, and Security, I mean, Committee meeting held this morning, and submit our report to the state. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Prudhomme moves to accept the report. Mr. Dixon, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Financial briefing note. Cameron?
Yes, sir. So, for the month ended October 31, 2021, the port generated revenues of 2.1 million, spending on favorable variance of about $800,000, primarily due to lower petroleum costs during the month, as well as some outstanding invoices for work with the state reserve due to the uncertainty of receiving payment. Fortunately, that was funds received from Entergy for granting right-of-way at the industrial now. Expenses were 3.4 million, resulting in a favorable variance of about $300,000, and most of that favorable variance is due to lower tonnages. Non-arranging revenues and expenses were 12.6 million, and sales for the favorable variance were 12.4 million. As mentioned at the last meeting, during the month, we received our final payment from the insurance loan purchase warrant. Earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and net reputation generated a loss of about $200,000, and cash flows of about 12.5 million, again, prior to the insurance proceeds. And given that tonnages were low during the month, we actually, on our vessel report for remainder of November, longer through December, we've seen a pretty sizable increase, and we expect revenues to be up to $100,000 by December. Onto the balance sheet, restricted cash has gone up 3.4 million since December 31, and that's primarily due to the insurance proceeds. We conceded full of 50 million, about $100,000 during the year, and it's been offset by hurricane payments, the payments to the property insurance premium, reservation of our SIR, and the P3 payments. Restricted cash investments have gone up, again, due to the P3 funds that we're holding and our reservation of the SIR. Trades receivables has increased to $700,000, primarily due to the fewer receivables that we booked and recently offset by reservation of those outstanding invoices. Fixed assets increased 10.4 million due to lower improvements, mobile hardware upgrade, bidder bears, and some of the hurricane-related building repairs. Construction progress increased 3.8 billion due to ongoing hurricane repairs and offset by those fixed assets. Current liabilities increased 200,000, primarily due to loans sold on behalf of P3, offset by hurricane payments, and fortunately, offset by the outstanding invoices that we reserve. Long-term debt, as mentioned in previous meetings, has decreased 1.2 million due to payment on principal payment on bonds. All other accounts remain, they're not soon going to change.
Okay. No questions. Thank you, Cameron. Okay. Department reports, Administration, Finance, and Security. Cameron, again.
Yes, sir. So, my staff and I are working to finalize any changes to the budget, which will be presented to you all at next month's meeting. And as for hurricane recovery, roughly 4.4 million is currently obligated in Louisiana, PA, of which we received another 772,000 earlier this month, bringing our current receipts so far to about 1.1 million. And as you all requested, I have Glenn joining us via Zoom if you all have any questions. And I also passed out his report, which shows a breakdown, as you all usually get. Any questions for me or Glenn? Is Glenn on?
Glenn on.
Send Glenn on.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Here you didn't see you. Anyone have any questions to Glenn with regard to the CSRS report?
I have a question. Of course. Hey, Glenn.
Good day, Judy.
I'm doing well. So, can you tell us, since the last time we spoke, in, I guess that was October, what, what good things have happened and what are still some of the obstacles, both from FEMA as well as from the state, from GOSET?
All right. I'll start with the obstacles, because port management, we've been dealing a lot with it lately, in regards to FEMA suddenly, a year into this disaster, decided to enforce a policy they have. It's called consensus-based codes and standards. And it's kind of slowed things down, so we're trying to work our way through that. Been at a lot of meetings with them, and had one minor victory. We're shooting for some more to keep the project's rolling. It seemed like we were just getting going good, and they came out of it, so it's slowed us down some, but it's not going to, you know, keep us from going forward. Some good news is the, both the unloaders, I mean, both the loaders at BT1 are nearly obligated. That's going to add another 27 million, I believe, to the five, nearly 5 million we have obligated now. So, that'll be a good jump, an increase there. And hopefully, a good chunk of that money will go towards paying off the insurance deductions that FEMA needs to make in order to not have duplicate funding for the insurance proceeds that the port received.
So, the minor victory for consensus-based, dollar-wise, what did that translate into?
About 350,000. It was the shed at the parking lot of BT7. It was our argument, since that building was destroyed, that we shouldn't have to produce, we being the port, shouldn't have to produce consensus-based codes and standards for a building that's not going to be repaired nor replaced. Instead, once we, the port determines where they're going to use the funding for that building, once it's obligated, at that point, the port would present consensus-based codes and standards for the new project. And, which makes sense for most of the things that I'm currently arguing on your behalf for. That was one that they did agree with. It was probably the most egregious error that they were, they were trying to get us to do. So, at least they finally recognized, you know, the foolishness of asking for consensus-based codes and standards on a building that's not going to be replaced or repaired. And also, it would require you to pay to have those codes produced twice, which nobody wants to do, to pay for anything twice.
And so, that is no longer being used on any project, or just that project?
That, that project, they agree with me that we do not have to produce the CBCSSs as the acronym for them, but they're still holding, they got their heels dug in, Julia, on the rest of them that I'm currently going around with and that, so.
And how many dollars would that account for?
It's a lot of money. Four, five, and six is going to be one of the projects. That's a $16 million project. All of the technical buildings are 428 projects, which means utilizing Section 428. That's FEMA lingo for you're able to use that money elsewhere. In other words, you're not going to repair the buildings on a technical, and they're asking for those. That's another couple million. Shed 7, FNT building, so we're definitely in the, you know, 20 million range.
20 million?
Yeah. Over.
So, I think the board is aware that, you know, our congressional delegation, specifically Congressman Higgins, has been an advocate. So, do you feel that will be the, that he's continuing to do that?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. We're very grateful to have the Congressman and his staff arguing on our behalf, and hopefully, we'll keep applying the pressure, and somebody at some level there will see. there will see that it's, you know, doesn't make any sense to provide those twice and definitely not provide them for a building that's not going to be repaired or replaced. The codes, the FEMA standard they have invoked now, we're starting to enforce, one of the major rules, reasons for it, is to help with resiliency in regards to repairing or building new buildings. They want to make sure we get the, you know, the strongest buildings possible so they're not constantly paying for the same buildings to be repaired after you've snored, which is understandable, but it, it's not understandable to ask for them to be used or requested for them on a building that's not being repaired, that's not going to be replaced.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Glenn? Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome. Everything's good.
Next is Navigation, Channing.
Mr. President, I believe the board is aware that Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District is the local sponsor for the sensor array that's been put on the channel by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. In fact, last May, the board approved adding another sensor out in the Gulf. It was a current sensor. And that's been installed and it's, it's proven its worth already. The existing current sensor was on buoy 36. The new sensor, current meter was put on buoy 35. They come in pairs. And after the new sensor was installed, the Coast Guard decided they needed to change out buoy 36. NOAA had to take the current meter off of 36. And then the project to replace buoy 36 got delayed by the Coast Guard. If we hadn't had the meter on 35 already, we'd have lost all that data until the Coast Guard gets to replace that buoy. So I just wanted to let you all know that that was a really good decision that you made to put that extra current meter out there. Other than that, if you have any questions on my report, I'll be happy to answer them.
I suspect we need to thank you for the good decision. Thank you for bringing it here.
Hard to take credit for that one.
Okay. Thank you, Channing. Operations, Todd?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Recently, at City Docks, we've loaded or unloaded three barges of aluminum tri-hydrate. IFG loaded another bulk rice shipment, it's another 30,000 tons, and we did a cargo transfer of about 4,000 tons. On the future at City Docks, we've got a couple more hydrate barges and about a 10,000 cubic meter lumber ship that sailed from Germany on around 1111. At BT1, as Cameron noted, we've been very, starting about the middle of last week, we've got a large amount of vessels that are arriving. We're about to finish up a Baywright ship, it's about 42,000 tons, and a Coke ship, about 38,000 tons. We've got three ships anchored out waiting to arrive. We've got a, a Green Coke ship, it's about 8,000 tons, another Baywright ship, it's about 20,000 tons, a Calsign ship, it's 8,300 tons, a Ruta ship, it's 10,000 tons, an Alcoa raw Coke ship, it's 33,000 tons, a Phillips 66 raw Coke ship is 55,000 tons, a Sitgo raw Coke ship is 49,000 tons, a Calsign ship is about 3,000 tons, and a Ruta ship is 15,000 tons. This is all going to be right around 300,000 tons of cargo that we're going to have to handle from about the middle of November through the end of the year. And with that, one thing I, I wanted to note is that, you know, I really wanted to thank all the guys at BT1. We're extremely shorthanded there. We have about 20 employees right now that are able to work at BT1. We normally have around 28. We've gone out for advertisements for bulk terminal specialists. We're on our sixth time this year, and we're averaging around three, four, five applicants at a time. Where in the past, we would get 50, 60, 70 applicants. And so, you know, I really want to thank those guys that are working hard. We're going to be working through the holidays, work through Christmas Day, well, not Christmas Day, we won't work Christmas Day, we won't work New Year's Day, but we will work Thanksgiving and through the, through the weekend. So those guys are putting in some long hours, I just wanted to thank them. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Todd, really. Cargo and trade development, Terrence?
Thank you, Mr. President. The port is featured in the Business and Industry Edition of the Lanyard Magazine that's going to print this week. We also are submitting the Industrial Parkage property to LED for Project Bison. Project Bison is a company looking for a location to manufacture turf maintenance equipment, primarily for the sale in the United States. We also are co-sponsoring and participating in a transportation session for the Rice Outlook Conference put on by the U.S. Rice Federation, and also continue to work on the 2022 permits for the Stevie Doring Vessel Agency line handlers and tugboat operator licenses. Let me have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Terrence. Engineering, maintenance, Nick?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. In the last week, we've held pre-construction meetings on two significant projects out at the City Docks. The first being the reconstruction of Burst Two and Three, which is our C-MAR project that we recently brought to the board with a guaranteed max price with Boe Brothers Construction. They're procuring materials now and plan to officially begin demo on January 3rd. This project will replace our two oldest remaining bursts at City Docks. The second pre-construction meeting was actually today for the roof replacement of Shed 16 and 17. This is in regards to hurricane damage from Hurricane Laura. These two sheds are 100,000 square feet each, so it's going to be repairing these roofs for significant storage space, and those buildings are currently rented. Also, as you know, there appears to be a lot of, of funding coming out through the infrastructure bills. Myself, along with all directors, have been monitoring and researching and attending webinars and phone calls, trying to get a handle on all this funding and what may be available for Lake Charles. We'll continue to monitor and apply where we can to try to get us some additional funding. That was all. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Nick. Any changes on lobbyist reports? Any other matters to come before the board? Executive session, is there any updates or changes that you're aware of, John?
No, sir, not at this time. I mean, I'm happy to give you guys a report, but there's nothing of significance, really. So it's up to you.
Okay. You good?
I'm good.
Okay. And then, we're not going to do executive session, have a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Mr. Dogbone moves. Second?
Second.
Mr. Lorenzi, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carried.